So, this meeting of the School Board Nominating Commission of Anarundel County will now come to order. I'd like to welcome not only our citizens and participants here joining us in the board's hearing room here on Riva Road, but also to those who are watching us live on whatever medium that may be, on TV as well as broadcasting and streaming live, as we often do. So, this meeting is, and our hearing, is our first in the next series of three hearings and meetings related to filling the pending, ensuing, rather, vacancies in District 30 and District 31 seats respectively on the Board of Education here in the county. Those of you who are watching us here, not only live but on TV, have probably seen the movie, perhaps the script is different this time. But, we are here to discharge our duties as a School Board Nominating Commission. I'm gonna go over just a couple of process and administrative items, and then we're gonna get into the agenda. We will be meeting again tomorrow evening, June 17th, to hear from the District 31 candidates. Tonight, we are gonna conduct some commission business and then turn our attention to the District 30 candidates who are with us here this evening. Those in the hearing room today, if you need to use the facilities, please do so to the chairman's left, your right in the audience. The doors to the chairman's right are locked and alarmed, we don't want those to go off. I also would ask if you have electronic devices, to please either put those on vibrate, quiet mode, or turn them off, we just don't wanna have any audible noises, so I appreciate that. We will have a third meeting of the commission next week, on June 23rd, at which time we will hear from designated witnesses of our candidates, public testimony. Then we will open up the hearing to members of the public on a first-come, first-served basis for up to three minutes, to hear their other support or opposition to any of the candidates for either district. And then the commission will deliberate and ultimately vote on sending candidates' names forward to the governor for his consideration. As a reminder, it does take eight votes of the commission to have your name forwarded to the governor, and again, just as a reminder. Those are administrative items that I just wanted to work through in my announcements. We do have a couple of pieces of new business, we'll get to those momentarily. The last item I'd like to do is introduce and welcome two new members of the commission. One perhaps is a more familiar face than the others. But, I would like to recognize Vicki Fretwell of, who is representing, rather, the Community College, and we welcome her to the commission and look forward to working with her. And, to the chairman's left, also recognize our other newest board member, Emily Brandenburg, who is probably a stranger not to a lot of us, but is here in a different capacity, and we certainly welcome her to the commission. So with that, we're gonna move on into the agenda and do approval of minutes. I know we have a couple of commissioners who were not part of our hearings earlier in the spring, so certainly, we don't expect them to sign off on all of the minutes. Minutes that were distributed for review and consideration tonight include the January 28th meeting of the commission and the February 18th meeting of the commission, which council has circulated. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes, consider the minutes.
Let me say we adopt the minutes.
Okay, well, we can consider them before we adopt them, but I'll make that modification. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, are there any changes, edits, that any commissioners have to the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, without objection, the minutes for January 28th and February 18th of the School Board Nominating Commission of Anarundel County are approved. Old business, don't really have any old business to really go through, the chairman doesn't. Chair, also recognize any commissioners for any old business that they would like to recognize at this time, hearing none. We'll move on to new business. We have two items to address, fellow commissioners and members of the public today on new business. One is an amendment to the bylaws of the commission, and the other is, for information purposes, a public information request that has been filed with the commission, and I will go over that shortly. But first, we are going to address an amendment to the bylaws. As perhaps commissioners know and members of the public, the commission does have a set of bylaws which govern not only its mission scope but behavior, basic governance standards for most bodies. Article four of our bylaws stipulates in section four, the voting rights of members of the commission. When we first convened in 2008, we drafted the bylaws and adopted the bylaws in such a manner as to not allow for the use of proxy voting by members of the commission. And at times, we've had to work around meeting schedules so as to discharge our duties properly with the requisite number of votes, not a quorum, but the requisite number of votes, and at times that has been a challenge. So, one of the things that we'd like to be able to do, and for the commission's consideration tonight, is amend the bylaws so as to allow for proxy voting in one circumstance and one circumstance only, and that is for voting for the candidates, affirmative or negatively, to move forward in the process. So, no other duties or votes would otherwise be effectuated by the amendment, so proxy voting would only be able to be used in a situation related to the voting of candidates to the governor for consideration. However, prior to doing that, there's another section of our bylaws, Article 10, which stipulates that when amending the bylaws or proffering an amendment to the bylaws, that 10 days' notice be given to the commissioners in the publication of the amendment unless we have a unanimous vote of the commission at the meeting at which we are addressing the particular amendment in question. So, given that we are not within the bounds of that 10 days, the chair would like to have a vote of the commission to address and consider the amendment before it. This needs to be a unanimous vote. I would ask if there are any objections at this time. Hearing none, I will take that as an affirmative unanimous vote of the commission under Article 10 to address the bylaw. So, we're gonna move to that now. Council has circulated a bylaw amendment, or an amendment to the bylaws, rather, for the commission's consideration. You have that in front of you, and hopefully you've had the chance to read it over. And again, as the amendment so reads, this would narrowly tailor the use of proxy voting in a vote when we are dispensing our duties and voting for or against candidates. Do any commissioners have any questions at this time related to the amendment?
I'd like to ask a question just-
Yes, we just need to push your mic down, Vicki-
It's green.
Okay, very good.
Can you help me understand what had happened that caused you to want to make this amendment? Have you been unable to forward candidates to the governor because you just didn't have enough people here?
No, we've never been unsuccessful in garnering the necessary votes to forward. Rather, what has happened is, in the past, is that we have suffered from logistical and scheduling challenges related to having enough, as many commissioners as possible to get to the eight votes, and at times that has meant rescheduling meetings or scheduling meetings at an appropriate time when we can get everybody in person, and it is not, you know, otherwise, nor would the exercise of the proxy affect the outcome, but it's more of a logistical exercise. And also, thinking prospectively into the future with future commissions so that ultimate flexibility could be given surrounding these votes.
And does the commission have a quorum requirement that would still be in place?
Yes, the commission does have a quorum requirement in the bylaws, and this does not in any way affect, deter, or limit the requirement to have a quorum to conduct business.
So we couldn't all be proxy votes?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're most welcome. Any others, yes, Commissioner Favazza?
I have a more question. Does this have to say that you have to notify the chairman by email since it's 24 hours? Do you have to put something in to say how you notify? I think it would be assumed email because in writing wouldn't get, mail would not get to you, but I don't know if we have to clarify that.
Well, and I can certainly defer to council on that, but the question of whether or not the verb notify needs to be modified as to the mode of communication, certainly could do that, I don't necessarily think it's necessary, but again, I'm open to suggestions and additional thought on that. Counsel, did you have a-
My question was if I had to write it, whether that would cover email or not.
Right, okay. So I would say, so notify the chairman in writing. So counsel, I think we would put the "in writing" after the word "chairman." Okay. But, thank you Commissioner Favazza, for that input. Anybody else? So, hearing none, council will make the modification to the amendment, and now I'd ask for a roll call vote of the commission-
Excuse me, is there gonna be a call on the count if there was no public notice?
On the amendment. So, Commissioner, let's start with Commissioner Blake.
Will you just confirm that there's no public notice for this amendment and there will be no public discussion?
Go ahead Commissioner Blake, I'll take care of the audience in a minute. Commissioner Fretwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Davenport?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Favazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrara?
Yes.
Commissioner Brandonberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Burden?
Yes.
The chairman votes yes. All right, so that's 10 yeses. Okay, so the amendment is as amended is adopted. Okay, so thank you. Next piece of business to move to is a public information request that was filed with the commission, brought to my attention as chairman on June 5th. I have circulated that request, which came to the commission via email from Mr. J. H. Snyder. As the commissioners can read, this is a broad request related to the public records of the commission from January 1st, 2010, until this request is otherwise fulfilled. I have had a conversation with council related to this request, and how we are moving about fulfilling the request, and what is going to happen and why I wanted to bring this to the commission's attention is, you know, all the records that are responsive to this particular request, most of those are going to be email correspondence, of which you were on at some point in time during this time period, as well as other written records. So, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, there's no action necessary, council is in the process of complying with the request, which needs to be done within 30 days of the request, so this will be on the other side of early July. But once those are in the public domain, they're in the public domain. So, we have really nothing to hide, but I just wanted to certainly bring this to the commissioners' attention, and this may or may not be the, you know, the last public information request that is asked of the commission. Any questions on that request? Okay. Any commissioners have any other new business that they'd like to be considered at this time? Okay. Hearing none, we are gonna move to our public testimony section of tonight's hearing. We are gonna hear from the District 30 candidates, Mr. James Appel, Ray Leonie, and Sol and Webb. They can move forward to the table in front of the commissioners' commission's dais. As we've done before, candidates will be recognized individually up to five minutes for an opening statement, at which time those are concluded, we'll turn to the commission for rounds of questioning. So, I'd like to thank our District 30 candidates for first applying, and also being with us this evening, so, in no particular order, I'll just do it alphabetically, I guess that's easier, right? Mr. Appel will recognize you first, again, for an opening statement of up to five minutes, and you're recognized, just make sure your mic is hot with the green button, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name's James Appel, I'm a new resident of Edgewater, but District 30 member since the redistricting, so I've been around for a little while, and I've lived in Anarundel County since I graduated from college in 1989. Currently, I've got a very precocious teenage daughter, she's a freshman at Annapolis High School, just finishing up. She's in the IB program and is absolutely loving being at Annapolis High School. She has excelled this year, and I imagine she'll continue to do so. It's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. Anarundel County schools are a great system, I'd like to make them better. Think I can bring fresh ideas, I can bring objective reasoning, and I think that's what makes me qualified to be on the school board. I have a direct interest, my daughter, I wanna see that she receives the best education along with all the other life lessons that she's been learning. I've been elected to represent the District 30, citizens of Anarundel County twice, so I feel that the public has already spoken, and they have, they hold me in the highest regard. I've served our community in a variety of capacities, I was the president of the Cape St. John Community Association, just down the street. I was the treasurer of the Parent Faculty Association at St. Andrews, where my daughter attended from kindergarten through eighth grade. I've also served on several economic boards around the county. My daughter did attend St. Andrews from preschool through eighth grade. My wife decided when she, after kindergarten, when she was there, we decided to keep her there, and then when she turned 13, moved her into the public school system, and again, it's been a great decision. While she was at St. Andrews, while we were at St. Andrews, we chose a new headmaster, and I was an integral part of that process. I was on the group that interviewed candidates and went through the whole selection process, so I understand what it takes to fulfill that role. Granted, obviously, the school board is a slightly larger scale, but again, it's still a similar task. I served on the Parent Faculty Association for five of the eight years Helen was there. I can appreciate what it takes to work together in a group, what it takes to gather the information, and make the experience of the teachers and the children a better experience overall. Professionally, I'm a chief financial officer for a program at the Department of Commerce. We are a fee-for-service program, so we don't use taxpayer dollars. We're a self-funded program, and we run as a break-even business, which leads me to my next qualification. I have extensive financial experience, I know how to run a business, I know how to make a program break even, I know how to make a program run efficiently. I determine and administer an eight-figure budget, audit, internal controls, I supervise a team of administrators, and oversee all aspects of the management of the program. When I first moved to Anarundel County, I was a sailing coach at the United States Naval Academy, so I understand how to teach. I'm not a teacher, but I do understand how to get the point across to both children and adults. The years between coaching and working for the largest employer in the country, I've owned several small businesses, so I have a really wide range of experiences from, again, from public service to small business to big government. So what I do as a school board member, it's a balancing act. You need to set policy, manage budgets, listen to stakeholders, and run a business. Again, it's still a business. My financial experience will be invaluable, I can manage budgets, I can read budgets, I understand them, I can make objective decisions without letting emotion take over. I can help set policy, we live in a dynamic world, and we need to be able to educate our children, the, what word I'm looking for, environmental factors are constantly changing, and so we need to be able to monitor and adjust to those. State and federal mandates are pushed down, we need to be able to adopt to these changes, not everyone fits into a box, and so we need to be able to understand all that. I'll facilitate teamwork, whether it's running a small business, leading an audit team, or selecting a new headmaster to school, I can bring everyone together. I'll look at every decision in that way, a new decision. I'm not coming in with any preconceived notions or any specific agenda, I would like to just simply look at everything and act on it objectively. So, I feel like I'd make a great addition to the Anarundel County School Board, again, financial experience, ability to review, set, implement policy objectively, and I have the personal connections to force myself to succeed, because my daughter's in the middle of it all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Leonie.
Good evening. My name is Ray Leonie, and I first want to thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I've been a resident of Anarundel County my entire life, most of it in Edgewater, the gateway to South County. I've raised two children in the South River feeder system, my daughter, who just finished her second year at Hofstra University in New York, and my son, who just graduated from South River this year and is getting ready for Anarundel Community College in the fall. My professional experience includes retail management and toys, seasonal Halloween, and Borders Books. I manage multiple stores during the Halloween season, open and close locations, build new stores, and manage every aspect of those businesses. In Borders Books before its demise, I started as a part-time bookseller, and in the course of five years worked my way through every supervisory position they had, and became a general manager in their store in Waldorf. Before my retail career, I owned my own newspaper delivery business, delivering the Baltimore Sun throughout southern Anarundel County, and before that, I spent 15 years in the cable television industry, leaving there as the construction manager of the cable system in St. Mary's County. I served three and a half years in the United States Air Force as an electronics and communications technician. The last 13 or 14 years, though, however, I've been involved in the school system. I participated in the 2006 MGT study, I served on multiple committees over the years, and have always been involved in some way in my children's schools. I've advocated for school budgets and specific programs at the state and council levels for many years. When I first started advocating, we wanted things like air conditioning in schools that didn't have any, and asking the board to consider programs like Avid, STEM, and expanding IB into the middle school program with the NYPD. The last two years, I've been advocating as the Maryland PTA president at the state level, a duty that concludes for me in July. This year has been dominated by discussions on testing, charter school law, and GCEI funding, all three of which I have my own unique opinions on besides those of the PTA. My passions are centered around adequate funding, class sizes, and aging infrastructure, and the achievement gap. I wholeheartedly believe that that gap can be worked down through a mix of targeted infrastructure, parental involvement, and the recognition that the home environment is a significant factor in some students' overall success. I was very glad to hear the good news about next year's funding this week, and I commend the county executive, the county council, for giving the school systems the means by which to achieve their goals. It is great to note that this budget provides the means to begin to meet the obligations of recent employee agreements. I am, however, concerned about next year and the ability to maintain maintenance of effort at this new level. I was glad to hear that funding was provided for a feasibility study for Crofton High School. This has the potential to relieve pressure at multiple high schools and possibly open up growth in those areas, thus increasing property tax revenues. I am concerned about several schools that are in need of relief or have structural difficulties. We have many buildings that are too small for their populations, like Tyler Heights, who are using multiple portables, or in need of replacement, like Edgewater Elementary School, where the building has undrinkable water, mold issues, and electrical challenges. I am hopeful that the new MGT study will give the board definitive guidance and lay the groundwork for a continuing dialogue between the county executive, county council, and the school board, and the state, for a comprehensive plan- council, and the school board, and the state, for a comprehensive plan to address these buildings going forward. I look forward to our dialogue this evening and hope that you will find me a deserving of a nomination to be considered for the District 30 seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Webb.
Good evening, Chairman Green and members of the commission. My name is Solon Webb. I've got a little bit of hay fever going on right now. Five years ago, when I appeared before the commission, I spoke of my involvement with the Anarundel County Public Schools, which included being a member of elementary and high school PTSAs, a founding member of the Parent Involvement Advisory Council, a member of the Annapolis High School School Improvement Team, a member of the Annapolis High School Business Advisory Board, co-creator of the Annapolis High School Panther Cafe, which I'm proud to say is in its seventh year of operation, and substitute teacher, and the parent of two Annapolis High School graduates. I've brought to the position my 20 years of business and military experience, having served in various executive and leadership positions, including president of American Capital Life Insurance Company, chief operating officer of the GHMSI Insurance Group subsidiaries of Blue Cross, and senior vice president of AIG Medical Access. As an officer in the Navy Reserve, I served in numerous leadership positions and successfully completed tours of duty as operations officer and executive officer for the Fort Meade National Security Agency Reserve Cryptologic Linguist Training Unit. This unit was responsible for onsite and offsite language training and testing of Navy, Air Force, and Marine Reserves nationwide. I wish to continue my service on the Anarundel County School Board. I can now add five years of school board experience to my resume, including four years as chairman of the Diversity Committee for the Board of Directors of Maryland Hall, two years on the School Board Policy Committee, and two years on the School Board Budget Committee, which I currently chair. I am a member of the International Project Management Institute, a designated project management professional. As a project manager, my ability to look at our school system and its programs from a cost-benefit and time perspective brings value to our board by making us more cognizant of how precious resources are expended and how there may be more efficient and effective means to achieve our goals. The Anarundel County School Board is the governing body of our school district. As such, the board is responsible for developing policies and ensure the proper care and management of district affairs. As I mentioned, I served two years on the Board Policy Committee, and during that time, did my best to ensure that board policy first and foremost advocate for the children of Anarundel County and support the mission of educating all of our children. After all, the children of Anarundel County, Maryland are our greatest resource. We must prepare them as best we can to be well-educated and productive members of our community. In my opinion, the three most critical issues currently facing Anarundel County schools are budget constraints, the achievement gap, and teacher retention and recruitment. For several years, our school system received maintenance of effort-level funding. In spite of that, our school system manages to stay in the highest echelon of top-performing school systems nationwide. In 2012, the board adopted my recommendation to form a board budget committee to provide guidance on how we presented our budget to the county council and the community. We wanted to show more clearly how existing funds were being used prudently, and we also wanted to illustrate how the school system benefited the community at large. This led to the development of an economic impact study that clearly illustrates the county's substantial return on investment in the school system. Presenting this information to the county council and county executive has resulted in a healthier atmosphere for sharing ideas and collaboration. Much energy and many resources have been targeted towards eliminating the achievement gap. To date, we have not achieved the desired results. To that end, a new department was established to address the issue. Also, a blue ribbon commission, of which I am a member, was created that will provide some recommendations to the school system. More emphasis on the elementary school years has demonstrated market increases in the success rate of students in their middle and secondary years. So, I believe more focus on pre-K and elementary education will play a major role in eliminating the achievement gap. However, to truly measure the success of any program implemented will require our school system to commit to stay the course. We must be consistent in our methodologies of instruction for the cohort of students, pre-K through 12. Teacher recruitment and retention has been an issue for some time. One reason is that neighboring districts pay more in salary in some instances. I recommended to my colleagues that we address the pay area by comparing the total compensation package, salary and benefits, to neighboring districts. When comparing the total compensation packages to surrounding counties, our school system was a little more competitive. So, a better explanation of the compensation may help in recruiting and possibly retaining staff. Minority teacher recruitment has not fared well. The recruiting net needs to be cast a bit further, and more social media should be used as part of the recruitment process. I have volunteered to go to colleges myself and recruit on behalf of our school system. This is but a brief summary of the issues we face. Suffice it to say, there's much work to be done. I talked about my experience and the skill sets that I brought to the position of board member, but the most personally beneficial skill I did not mention is the ability to listen. Listen to staff, listen to community, listen to politicians, and listen to children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All right, we're going to turn to the commission now for a round of questions. Start us off, we're going to go to the chairman's left. Mr. Burden, start us off, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, for your desire to serve and to step forward and be willing to serve on the Board of Education here for Anarundel County. Very much appreciated. Let's go ahead and start with Mr. Webb, if we may, please, and then we'll go to Mr. Leonie and then Mr. Appel. My first question, do you support Common Core and Maryland Public Education, Mr. Webb?
I am a proponent of Common Core, but I still have my reservations about how it's being rolled out. I think there needs to be more, closer look at how that's all put together to see how it will work in the long run. As I mentioned before, we need to put out ways of, methodologies of instruction that we can maintain and be consistent with. I'm not absolutely sure that we can be consistent with this core program for a cohort, like I talked about, K through 12 cohort. I think it needs some more introspection.
Thank you, Mr. Leonie.
I support Common Core, or the Maryland College and Career Readiness, as it's supposedly termed. I think, in the long run, that Common Core is a great overall concept and addresses a lot of the needs of stair-stepping students throughout their career and assessing that it works correctly at the end of each stair-step. That being said, the park testing that comes along with that has to not only evolve with that, but also evolve our teaching standards for Common Core. So, as students get assessed, and hopefully, that assessment window grows shorter and shorter, as opposed to longer and longer, the way it rolled out the first year, I think as those assessments come in and model what they're learning, they should be able to take that back and fix the curriculum to match the test, and then the test to match the curriculum. And it should be a constant battle back and forth between those two concepts in order to provide a clear picture all the way across, so that by the time we're four or five more years into this, if it stays its course, if it doesn't do what everything else has done and change in seven years, then, you know, I think we have a really good system in play. But we have to let both of those pieces work in order for it to be successful, I think.
Thank you. And Mr. Appel.
I think Common Core is here. It would be extremely expensive to drop the program, but it needs some work. I'd like to see it developed from kindergarten up through 12th grade in a staggered approach, rather than thrust upon the system all at once. I think there's room to make it a better program, and that will then eventually help the students and teachers do what it's supposed to do. I think the way it is right now, though, isn't really working very well. But I think there's room, so there is room for improvement, but it needs to be done gradually and efficiently.
Okay. And my second question, if we could start with you again, Mr. Webb. What emphasis would you place on early childhood education in our public school curriculum?
Tremendous emphasis on that. I was happy to see the superintendent roll out the Triple E program, which addresses the early childhood education. But all indicators point to the fact that if we get involved earlier in a child's education, they have a better chance of success in their secondary and primary years. So, that's a definite, a big point of interest for me, to focus on that area.
And Mr. Leonie.
I think it's imperative that we put as much emphasis as we can on early childhood. Them getting into the first grade with the requisite skills to be successful means all the difference in the world. That by the time they hit that third-grade indicating point of whether or not they're going to be successful, that they need all that underpinning. And environmentally, it's very challenging in parts of this county in order for early childhood to work. It has to be something that we concentrate on equitably all the way across the board, but it has to be something that we give three- and four- and five-year-olds the support they need to be successful. So, yes, I wholeheartedly think it's a great thing.
And Mr. Appel.
I would also agree. I mean, I think it's extremely important to build the foundation of the students early. They're so pliable at an early age that getting them into the education system, getting them accustomed to that environment in the early stages of their development is critical.
Okay. And my final question, again, if we can begin with you, Mr. Webb. Does the business community have an investment in public education here in Anarundel County and a role to play in the education of our young people? And how would you engage the business community as a member of the board?
The business community absolutely has a part to play with us, with the school system. Currently, our signature programs get the business community involved in a number of situations with various high schools that we have around the county. The main crux of the educational system that we've been talking about has been one that will provide the kind of education that the employers of the county are looking for, for the new jobs that are coming about in Anarundel County. We want to make sure that we are in line with what's needed out there in the marketplace and the workforce. So, I see a symbiotic relationship continuing and continuing to grow as we grow our signature programs and as we grow some of the other magnet programs and other programs that we're doing now.
Thank you. And Mr. Leonie.
I think business partnerships have both a small footprint and a large footprint. Like Mr. Webb was pointing out, the larger footprint of the partnerships with signature programs and those kind of ideas are critical to the school system being successful at that level. But the smaller-level partnerships, the involvement in the high schools, in working with folks to just fill out job applications, from the retail background that I currently work, I can't tell you how many times folks come in the door with a resume that's not complete, that is not properly filled out, that is missing critical information. We have an obligation to make sure that, you know, our students are business-ready right from the very beginning as they come out of school. And then, to take it to a different pairing, the public-private partnerships that need to evolve in order for us to be able to afford to tackle some of our infrastructure program problems, I think that has to be looked at and developed as well, that we can't do it on the backs of just government alone, that there's never going to be enough money to do the aging infrastructure issues that we have.
Thank you. And Mr. Appel.
I think business definitely need to be involved at all levels. I believe that they've got a moral obligation to aid in the education of the citizens of the county. Everyone does. I mean, small businesses, large businesses, families, I mean, everyone needs to work together. And they have a fiscal responsibility. The better the education system throughout the county, the better their businesses will run, and it'll be an upward spiral, rather than if everyone keeps to themselves and doesn't aid in the community development, it ends up being in more of a downward spiral.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for your answers. Appreciate it. And again, thank you for your desire to serve. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner Burden. So, since I've been out of practice for three months, I forgot to mention. So, for our new commission members, I think others have it, it's rote now, but we usually have seven minutes per commissioner for questioning. And the emphasis, not on the commissioners, per se, but on our esteemed candidates, about having an economy of words when one answers questions would be most appreciated. So, having said that, Commissioner Brandon Burden.
Thank you, and thank you, three gentlemen. I want to echo what Mr. Burden said for stepping up and coming tonight. Having spent some time as a Board of Education member, it was a very, it's a very important role, and it can often be a very challenging role. And I was hoping that each of you could spend a few minutes describing to me what you've, how you envision the role and the responsibility of a Board of Education member. And we'll start with Mr. Webb.
One of the things I envision is, as I said before, the ability to listen. When I first came on the school board, I thought I could hit the ground running, roll up my sleeves, hit the ball out of the park, and I found out very quickly, that's not the case. It takes a lot of sacrifices and bunts and singles to get to where you want to go. Collaboration is key, being able to work with your fellow board members, being able to work with staff, the superintendent, being able to liaise with the outside world as well, the community, the politicians, the people, all the stakeholders who have a vested interest in this. I should keep this short. I'll stop.
Mr. Leonie.
I vision it two ways. A good listener is obviously, you know, probably the primary quality that you have to have, but being able to bridge gaps and also lead by example. I'm a firm believer in the theory of servant leadership, getting in and getting your hands dirty, learning, you know, objectively, the nuts and bolts and how things work, and, you know, making decisions based on fact and reasoning and not on emotion. So, I think that would be, you know, qualities that I would look at in any Board of Education candidate.
Mr. Appel.
I think first and foremost, we need to be able to manage the budget. Again, it's a business. It's the largest percentage of the county's budget, and it needs to be managed, it needs to be managed well. And then, second, it needs to set policy. It's not here to teach the kids. It's not here to run the programs. It's there to set the policies by which the institutions can then educate the children.
Thank you. And I have a follow-up question, and I'll start with you, Mr. Appel, because you sort of touched on it. I think often, sometimes alert lines get blurred between a Board of Education member and the administrator of the school system. And so, I want to talk a little bit about how you envision your role and the relationship with the superintendent of schools.
I think it's important to be able to work well with the superintendent. They have their role, and the board has theirs. And it's the board's, it's the board's role to, again, set the policies by which the administrator can then run the system. We're not here to tell the superintendent how to do their job. We're certainly not here to do their job for them. We're here to set the guidelines and set the policies by which they're going to run the, run the system.
Mr. Leonie.
I think in the long run with the superintendent, he's a paid employee. He's on a contract, and he has certain expectations. And being comfortable making him meet those expectations and those set-forward goals has to be of primary concern.
Mr. Webb.
I helped to hire the most recent superintendent, and as I told him, when I hired him, I've got your back, because we hired him, we're responsible. He works for us. He will carry out the duties as we, we believe they should be carried out, and that's how they're reflecting in policy. And I don't see any reason to really get in the superintendent's way unnecessarily to let him do his job.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Commissioner Farrara.
First of all, I want to thank you for your tenacity and your perseverance for wanting to reapply again. So, thank you very much. Consensus building is very important. Could you please give me an example of how you have done that in consensus building and coming to a resolution?
Mr. Appel.
I'm a current member of the Central Committee, and one of the roles of the Central Committee is to replace delegates upon a vacancy. And similar to the task that this commission had last time, we had 16 applicants- And similar to the task that this commission had last time, we had 16 applicants vying for that position. And so, that was, that was some tricky business. And it required the 13 members of our, of our committee to work together and to negotiate, figure out how to come up with the best, the best candidate for that position. So, that was probably my most recent experience.
My most recent would have been basically bylaws resolutions with the Maryland PTA. I govern a 27-man board under Robert's Rules of Order, and occasionally, you'll get six or seven folks who adamantly, for one reason or another, do not believe in the bylaw that you're bringing forward. And you have to demonstrate both listening skills, compassion, the ability to hear, not only just listen to them, but hear what it is that their concerns are, and be able to take that at a level that lets everyone understand that, in the long run, it's a board's decision. And the board has to walk away owning that position. You can't, you can't govern by one person brow-beating seven other people, it just doesn't work. It has to be something that everybody walks away from at the end of the day with ownership of, and they have to be comfortable with that ownership. So, you have to listen and be compassionate and do the hard work of reaching across the aisle sometimes.
Did you get your bylaws?
I managed to get the first dues increase at the state level in a decade with no dissenting votes. It's all about doing your homework.
I'll talk about the Budget Committee, how that came about. I advocated for a Budget Committee in my second year on the board. There was a lot of opposition to that, but I kept explaining to our members different rationales for why it would be helpful to have a Budget Committee. In particular, you know, our primary functions are policy and budget. We had a policy committee, why not a Budget Committee? They finally agreed to an ad hoc committee, which gave us an opportunity to demonstrate the value of having a Budget Committee, and now that's a permanent standing committee.
Thank you. My next question. What do you consider in a priority, one of the most important issues, and how do you set about to try to solve it?
I mean, I'll come back to the budget. I think the resources are limited, and they need to be spent wisely and efficiently. So, I would like to work with the superintendent to examine what is being provided by the county and manage the resources that are given to him the most efficient way possible.
For me, it's probably the achievement gap, that we have to bring the bottom up, and we have to do it in a number of creative ways. We have to attack it from the issue of their home environment, to feeding them well, to, you know, hunger solutions and those kind of things, but also to making sure that where we're struggling there, that we have adequate class sizes, that each child gets an equitable chance to move forward and gets the supports they need. So, that would be mine.
I agree with Ray. The achievement gap is an issue, and I believe that we've already, we're already taking some steps in the right direction. I'll be happy to hear what the results are of the Blue Ribbon Commission and our newly-formed department to look at these issues. But I believe a rising tide lifts all boats. So, the more we can develop a sound pre-K and early elementary program, I think that's going to go a long way to eliminating that gap.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Commissioner Favazza.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for being here, for reapplying. We really appreciate it. I know it's a very long process, and I just appreciate it. I have a different question for each of you, and I was really trying to look at resumes this time and try to have specific questions. So, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Appel. And I kind of already tagged teams on an answer or response that you just gave, but you've mentioned several times and in your resume, in your application about the budget, so I can sense you have a passion about the budget. But you mentioned in your application this statement, that the board needs, we need to make sure all funds allocated to education are being spent to fulfill the mission of the system. So, I was hoping you might elaborate on that, or kind of explain if you're maybe suggesting that they're not currently being spent perhaps where you think they should be spent.
In my, in my role as a government employee and my involvement with the county, I have been made aware that there are probably some inefficiencies, and I think we can always do a better job. It's, it's a difficult balancing act when you're dealing with county, state, or federal employees, and the restrictions that are placed on, on the practices around personnel and around spending. And I think with some, you know, careful examination, again, both from a facility standpoint and from a personnel standpoint, I think that we can probably be more efficient. I'm not looking to cut anything right off the bat. I think that we can set policies that will allow us to be more efficient in managing our funds.
Thank you. Mr. Leoni, in your application, as I think we've all heard, you have served in several roles, actually shaping school board or school system policy through your involvement in the local PTA, through your service on various commissions and task force, and also your involvement on the state PTA. I was wondering if, do you think that you will be able to be an objective board member, given that you might be on the other side of the issue now? And if you could just elaborate on that.
I think that for probably the last, I want to say, four years, but probably the last six, I have been, because of my positions with PTA, relatively shackled in my ability to respond the way that I personally feel on things. That as a PTA member and especially as a leader in PTA, I have to walk that fine line of, you don't walk outside of the box as a leader, that you live what it is that you believe that organization should be. Now, is that organization right 100% of the time in the way that it advocates for things? Now, it tends to go a little passionate. Now, I probably would not have been as vehement about GCEI and the $68 million had I not been the Maryland PTA president, but as the leader of that organization, I had a top-down attitude that you have to support what the folks in PTA are telling you to support. So, when we have a legislative agenda passed by, you know, a board of 30, or a board of on 30-some-odd folks, and a general membership representing 900-plus schools, I'm not allowed to walk outside of that box and not catch a lot of grief for it. So, I hope that answers your question.
I think it does. Thank you. Mr. Webb, again, thank you for your current service on the board, and my question is related to that. You have clearly made a significant impact on the board with this Budget Committee, and I would just like you to answer, some people suggest you serve, for any member who has served a term on a board, that why not allow somebody else a chance to make an impact? So, the question would be, why should we, why should we want to have you continue to serve on the board?
As I mentioned in my opening statement, there's much work to be done, and a lot of the work is in progress as we speak, as a matter of fact, for new board members to come on, on board, it's one great thing. But I've seen in my five years that some projects, some, some issues have kind of dropped off, off of the plate, because there wasn't that person who knew the history, who knew the legacy, that could continue the thoughts, the thought process for any given issue. There are a number of issues like that currently, that quite frankly, if you didn't have any board members who had been on the board at the fruition of these, these events, it probably would escalate into some issues that you would not want to have.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank all of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'll start with Mr. Appel. The Anaronto County Public School System has roughly 10,000 employees. All but a few hundred of them are represented by collective bargaining agents. Do you believe there's an appropriate place for collective bargaining in Maryland public schools?
I do, to an extent. I think that collective bargaining units can both help and hurt the employees and the organization itself. I think when we get to the point where the bargaining unit begins to overwhelm and extend its boundaries, then it will diminish the ability of either the administrator and/or the school board to be able to effectively manage that organization. So, there's a fine line between helping the employee and, again, overstepping the bounds and handcuffing both the administration and the school board. I think we need to set policy to be able to keep that in check.
I need a little bit more clarification. We knew, discussed stepping past its bounds. What are its boundaries?
I think that, again, a collective bargaining unit will prevent certain policies from being set, whether it's compensation packages, or what they're, what the, what the teachers or administrators are expected to do and not expected to do. I think that if we're going to continue to improve the system, we need possibly some more flexibility, and those bargaining units may hinder that flexibility.
You do realize that collective bargaining agreements require the signatures and ratification by both parties, correct?
Of course.
One more question before I move on to another candidate. You mentioned your awareness of there being inefficiencies in both in program and in personnel. How many of those inefficiencies, I'm having trouble with that word tonight, how many of those inefficiencies do you believe are the product of collective bargaining?
I can't put a number on it.
Can you name two?
No, I cannot. I believe overall that the, again, the collective bargaining units will reduce the flexibility of the organization. And so, I would like to limit the collective bargaining to allow the flexibility and hopefully create more efficiency.
Mr. Leoni, I'm going to take you just in order, because you happen to be in order.
No worries.
Same question. Do you believe there's an appropriate place for collective bargaining in public schools?
Absolutely. I do believe that there's an appropriate place. Those bargaining units represent folks who need a voice in the process and need someone who is intelligent and compassionate to their needs in order to negotiate on their behalf. I think that if left on its own, it would be very difficult for, say, a brand-new teacher or a brand-new custodian or a brand-new administrative assistant to know where they are in the process and what their, not only their obligations, but what their rights are. And there has to be mechanisms that help protect those rights.
Thank you, Mr. Leoni. Mr. Webb, same question, and I think you have probably answered this before.
Yeah, I do believe there's, there's a place for collective bargaining. The employees need a voice, bottom line. They need a voice. And it doesn't necessarily have to be an antagonistic relationship, it can be a collaborative relationship. I think we have shown that with our current board in some situations with our unions here, that we can collaborate to arrive at some, solve some issues rather than have the constant friction of antagonism.
Okay, thank you. Just checking my time. Mr. Appel, you listed the top three issues, the top three most critical issues that we face, and the second of your top three was personal accountability. The implication that gives me when I read that being in number two in your top three critical areas is that you have some indication that you've experienced that we're not being held accountable as public school educators. Is that the case? And give me an example.
No, I'm not, I'm not accusing or making any kind of claims that people aren't being held accountable. I think that it's a job of the board and the education system to continue to hold the teachers and the administrators accountable. It's not something that's necessarily broken, but it can always be reviewed, and everything can always be improved upon.
Do you believe it's-
I'm not, I'm not picking on anyone in particular, I'm not trying to point out any, any group or organization saying that they're not being held accountable. But I think that is something that can continue to be reviewed and discussed and improved upon.
Do you believe it's fair to evaluate teachers by student test scores?
No. No, that can't be the, that can't be the only way to evaluate a teacher. Could it be a component? Probably. I mean, a small component, but I think there are so many other factors. Now, again, you need to weigh the, the cost of that evaluation and the objectivity or subjectivity of that evaluation, whether it's going to be an accurate evaluation or not. But no, test scores are certainly not the, the way to evaluate teachers.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leoni, I'll just give you the second half of that question, because I'm running out of time. Do you believe it's fair to rate teachers by student test scores?
No, it can't be the only mechanism that you, that you use. There needs to be student learning outcomes, that there needs to be evaluations by peer and by the administration on a fair and objective way. That's the same for every teacher that's evaluated. It cannot be something that's subjective. It has to achieve its goal of making sure that teachers are doing what they're supposed to be doing and teaching children. But no, testing cannot be the be-all and end-all of that. It has to have a far broader reach.
Mr. Webb?
No. I don't.
Thank you very much. Thank you all, and thanks for taking part in this.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first question goes to Mrs. Solomon. Mrs. Solomon, you've been a board member for the past five years, and my question to you is that, have you seen any improvement in closing the achievement gap? And if yes, explain.
If you go back and look at some of the prior board meetings, you'll often see me when they give the annual eliminating the achievement gap report. I usually have my hand like this, saying the needle has not moved, and that's one of the reasons why we've changed things up. The needle, the needle truly has not moved. We've seen some individual successes here and there, but the type of success we're looking for, we have not, not achieved yet. I'm hoping with this new, new committee and with the Blue Ribbon Commission, we can change that paradigm and actually see that needle move for a change rather than the same eliminating the achievement gap report being pretty much polished up, dates changed, and submitted to the board again.
Okay, the next question to Mr. Leoni. Question to you, in your information here, you said that, I want to read it because I want to make sure, I want you to explain something to me. I also want to contribute to the conversation about closing the achievement gap and addressing equity issues within the school system. And you said, "Anaronto County Public Schools have been struggling for a long time about giving kids free breakfast of breakfast." So, are you saying that if the kid gets free breakfast, that's one way of closing the achievement gap? And if you were saying that, please explain.
Absolutely. I do believe that breakfast in the classroom and Maryland Meals for Achievement, those programs, go a long way toward making kids able to learn in the morning. So, and what I mean by that is, imagine you're sitting up there and you haven't had a chance for having dinner, and you don't necessarily know that dinner is waiting for you at home. having dinner, and you don't necessarily know that dinner is waiting for you at home. What are you more apt to be thinking about? What dinner is going to be and how you're going to get it? Or are you going to be more apt to be thinking about the test that's in front of you or the lesson plan that's in front of you? Filling their bellies in the morning makes it far easier for them to learn and concentrate on school and not the -- the bottom of that achievement gap, that bottom layer, doesn't have food sometimes at home. And we feed them in Anarundel County Public Schools, sometimes the only caloric intake that they get for the day in some cases. They just sent a news release home just the other day about the 20-some-odd places that you can go in Anarundel County to get food during the summer because it's that important, that we are sometimes their only support. And there are literally thousands and thousands of dollars available to do that in Anarundel County. There are 17 schools right now that are on the list that can qualify for CEP, which is the Community Eligibility Program, where all they have to do is say yes as a school system. All we have to do is say yes, and those 17 schools get free breakfast and free lunch for every child in the school at no cost to the school system. They don't have to fill out the little Title I survey cards. Because they're already enrolled in other programs, both at the national level or the state level or the county level, WIC, those kind of things, they are immediately targeted to have free breakfast, and the whole school gets it. Those 17 instances, they meet the criteria right now and can have free breakfast, starting just like Baltimore City just announced. And I am passionate about that. Sorry.
Bless you.
Mr. -- finish, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Mr. James Apple, what creative plan would you like to put in place to help to close the achievement gap?
I'd like to give teachers the facilities and the resources. I'd like to see smaller class sizes, which probably means more schools to allow for those smaller class sizes. Again, the more efficient we can be with our resources, the more we can put back into the system. So I think, again, the smaller school, smaller class sizes, more schools, I mean, the addition of Crofton High School is going to be a huge, you know, relief on the system. And again, I think that's going to make the biggest difference.
I think all three of you would say that we have a very good school system. So what program in Anarundel County Schools that you feel very proud of, and as a board member you would like to see it continue, and how would you implement it? Starting with Mr. Solomon here.
I'm very proud of the Avid program. I would like to see it expanded. I've seen it work wonders with so many children. I've actually been a mentor to some of the children who have been in Avid. I've also been on field trips with the Avid students to visit colleges. And the difference, well, even my son, my son was a 2.5 average going into the Avid program, and he graduated with a 3.7. So I've seen the difference that Avid makes firsthand.
And not to be repetitious, but yeah, I've probably been the poster child for advocating for Avid since my children were in the sixth and seventh grade. My daughter was a middle-of-the-road student and is now carrying a 3.2 at Hofstra and qualifying for discounts on her loans, which is a great thing, I would think. It's definitely helping quite a bit. But no, Avid, I have served as an Avid tutor. I've worked with the Avid program in Central Middle School and South River High School. I'm very passionate about it. And if I could throw in a hint for a second one, that would be expanding STEAM, the arts integration piece of STEM, into our school system as well on a broader level than what we're doing right now.
I think, obviously, I have the most connection with the IB program as my daughter's a part of it. I've seen a lot of the kids come through the STEM program. I think that the benefits that those programs are giving the kids as they get out of the school system and into colleges, the amount of money that is being given to these guys after graduating with those degrees in, you know, in tuition help at the collegiate level has been invaluable.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, all three of you, for your commitment to go through this process again. Mr. Leonie, I'll begin with you. And I do agree that attacking hunger is one of the primary things, you know. Anyone who is even around children, whether you're in the system or whether you have children of your own, know that, like Maslow's hierarchy, you've got to get those physical needs taken care of before you can move up into anything that involves, you know, any of the mental processes. You further mentioned in your resume or in your application that once you sort of look at and make some progress with the field of hunger, you can start addressing other issues as well as parental involvement. So will you expand a little bit on how you see your role as a board member in working towards engaging more parental involvement, particularly in the parts of the county where we still have many parents who feel disenfranchised and are reluctant to come out and support their schools?
Yeah. My role as a PTA leader, both at the county level and at the state level, I spent a considerable amount of time going into schools that were struggling just to get three folks to step up and be the minimum that you could be for a PTA or a PTO in a school. You have to have a president, a secretary, and a treasurer. That's Maryland law, as long as you're incorporated as a nonprofit, you're stuck with that. And in some schools, Georgetown East was, I guess, the first one that comes to mind, they really struggled just to have parents even involved at some level. I've gone into that, when I went into that school, the secretary was one of those three positions. Teachers typically step up into those positions so that there is some sort of parent organization that allows them to do at least minimal fundraising activities that's not under the purview of the principal himself. They have to have, children have to know that parents care about them. And the best way to do that is to have parent involvement in school in whatever form or fashion that it comes in. It doesn't have to be a PTA, doesn't have to be a PTO, it can be a parent association, it can be anything. It can be dads just coming in on, you know, mornings and helping, you know, kids get across the crosswalk. Showing that folks care about them is a huge plus to children who might not have anybody else that cares about them besides maybe a grandmom or a working mom or a surrogate parent of some sort. In a lot of the situations that we have in elementary schools in this county, in the poorer ones, they struggle just to be able to meet basic needs. And having a parental support system, there's a lot of churches that do Backpack Buddies and things like that. People find ways to be involved in those schools, and those kids see that every day. They know that adults care about their welfare and their well-being and want them to succeed and do better. And that has to be integral in anything that we do to attack the achievement gap. Thanks.
And as a follow-up, what do you think that administrators and principals should be able to expect from their PTAs or PTOs or whatever parent organization they have, what sort of support, a level of support?
If they're doing it right, they're not expecting them just to be a fundraising R, plain, pure, and simple. I mean, a lot of PTAs and PTOs travel down that road. They come in, they raise great amounts of money, they pour it back into the school in field trips and performances and storytellers and artists and residence programs and those kind of things. But to be a functional part of the school, to volunteering in the classrooms, to doing the flashcards in the hallway with kids that are struggling, to help teachers do their jobs without hindering teachers from doing their jobs, I think is probably the best thing you could do for a school.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Webb, during your first term as a member of the school board, what do you consider to be your most significant contribution in setting board policy, and how has it impacted students, families, and staff in Anarundel County Public Schools?
I would say my most significant achievement at setting board policy has been, actually in general, we've had policies that have, are 20 years older or more. We've set out an initiative to try to update as many as we could, as fast as we could. When I came on to the board with the Policy Committee, the timeframe for getting those done was very short, but a lot wasn't being accomplished. Since then, we've updated a great deal of the policies. I can't speak to one particular policy in particular that has had a great impact, but the overall impact of updating the policies, period, from policies that were, hadn't been looked at since the '80s in some cases, has been substantial.
Okay. And what do you think is the relationship that PTAs, PTOs, and other parent organizations should have with their schools?
Other than being that fundraiser, as Ray talked about, I think the PTAs can act very much similar to the way the Citizens Advisory Council acts for the board, for the school board, in that they're the folks who have their ear to the ground, they're closest to what's going on in the particular areas, and they can share that information with the administrator, the principal, and they can act on that information in a timely manner. And they are the ones who can identify community needs, community strengths, and again, relay that to the administrators, to the principals, so that they can use those in developing whatever plans they have for that school.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Appel, your critical issues seem to have garnered quite a bit of attention from the commissioners. So when you talked about personnel accountability, you mentioned that you felt the board needs to set policies to ensure this. What kind of policies? Can you give me an example of what you would try to push through or suggest as a policy?
I think maybe some of my comments have been taken a little bit too strongly. I'd like to just continue to review what's in place. I didn't have any specific policy in mind to hold any particular group or bargaining unit accountable. So I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to come in and broadly change anything. As Mr. Webb just mentioned, there are policies that haven't been reviewed since the '80s. So I think that a new set of eyes on existing policies can simply just bring out some inefficiencies or things that need to be changed. There's nothing glaringly obvious, but again, I feel that everything needs to be reviewed on a periodic basis.
Okay. And then--
Commissioner Bukowski, we're a little over. Do you have one other question?
So what do you think the role of the PTA, PTO, and other parent organizations should be in relation to the school?
Keeping lines of communication open. It creates the, it creates the circle, it finishes out the circle, between the administrators, the teachers, the students, and the parents. It brings it all back around. Obviously, fundraising is always an important part of it, being able to aid the teachers in teaching the students in ways that are not being provided for them by the school system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frentwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. As the representative trustees, I'm compelled to ask all three of you the same question, and it has to do with the relationship between the community college and the Board of Education. What you do know about existing initiatives and programs that the two institutions join in together, and what you'd like to see happen to enhance that relationship that would benefit both institutions, both faculties, and students? Mr. Appel?
I mean, I think there's probably a wide variety of things that can be done to bridge the, bridge any gaps between the secondary schools and the collegiate level. Allowing the kids to take classes at the community college has been a big benefit. I've known several students who have done that. So I'd like to see that program expanded. I think allowing juniors and seniors to get that college experience while still in high school would get them excited about moving on to higher education. I think people, I think there are a lot of kids in high school who think, oh, all I want to do is get my college degree and I'll be safe. I want to get them excited about continuing their education.
Thank you. Mr. Leonie?
I'll be honest with you. The only ties that I ever saw with my children coming through high school were folks like Diane Bennett, who served at South River High School as the liaison between the college and the school system. And the guidance counselor's ability to let them know ability, their ability to take classes at Anarundel. I think that not only should those kind of ties be expanded, but the community college should have a greater presence in the high school structure as coaching, helping students get the requisite things that they need. I'm still waiting to see how, you know, the proctoring of the Park Test stuff works out and what's acceptable as college-ready and what isn't, and how that develops, you know, in the next two years. But in that meantime, kids need to know how they can interface early if they're driven to do such and get the most advantage out of that first year, both intellectually and financially, because it costs an awful lot to take a remedial English or a remedial math in order to be able to start getting college credit. And I want to see that gap disappear so that parents aren't saddled with that extra budgetary means for their child to take on a collegiate career.
Mr. Webb?
Well, I must say that Anarundel County Community Colleges does a great job of marketing because, in general, the students believe that you all are first-rate in every way, shape, and form. We have students that take courses there. I believe we have some online presence as well. We've used your facilities for things. The last Parent Involvement Advisory Council meeting that I went to was at Anarundel Community College. So there's a lot of shared relationship there. I believe when I was on the school business advisory board for Anarundel County, we actually had a representative from the college on that business advisory board. I'm not sure if they do that with every high school, but in that particular case, they were there, and they were there to help in any way that they could.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake?
Gentlemen, welcome. Thank you all for your public service and for your desire to continue that public service. I have a question and then a follow-up, and I will ask the first question. We'll start with Mr. Webb. Mr. Webb, what is your view on the role of charter schools, and do you think that their role should be expanded in Anarundel County?
I believe that there is a role to be played by charter schools, especially in this situation that we have here where we have the overcrowded schools that we have. If we can't get the funds to build the public schools, then possibly a charter school might be an option to that. So I would not rule out that as an option.
I think they have a big role to play. I've been a proponent of charter schools for a while now, and I see them as both an overcrowding relief and a mechanism to encourage both the bottom and the top of students. I could envision in the very near future charter schools that not only relieve overcrowding issues, you know, one off the end of Forest Drive somewhere, you know, say where MAF is, would be an absolutely-- is, would be an absolutely wonderful thing, I would think, you know, to alleviate the crowding across, you know, that whole Forest Drive corridor. But things like Chesapeake Science Point where they're targeting math and science skills, having those crop up inside of that charter school environment, I think would be a great thing. But I think we have to be very careful about how we do charter schools in the county and that the rules and the way we do that need to be very carefully managed so that we don't run into mispropriety or, you know, big business being in charge of it. Education should be under the purview of education and not necessarily under the purview of big business.
I think we should absolutely expand charter schools. I think it's a way of thinking outside the box, it's a way of using resources in different ways. So I think it's got a, it's got a big role to play. I think it can, again, help across, across the lines, getting smaller class sizes, getting more resources down to the, down to the teachers and the students.
Thank you. My follow-up, and I'll start with Mr. Appel and come back this way, is Maryland is generally recognized to have fairly strict laws when it comes to charter schools. Do you think that the current laws are adequate or would you support changing them in any way?
I would certainly be a proponent of relaxing restrictions on the charter schools. I think, again, allowing us to be a little bit more flexible will allow us to use the limited resources that we have more efficiently.
I have to agree to a certain extent. I believe that we do need to relax it a little bit, but as far as teacher credentialing and the finance, the financial sustainability of the models that they present, I think those both have to be both a solid business model and one that keeps certified teachers in those positions that we can guarantee that, you know, each child is getting, you know, the supports that they're supposed to get. And I think you can only do that with a certified environment.
I don't think we, we should relax our current standards. I attended a conference just a couple of months ago with school systems from the state of Ohio. There they have thousands of charter schools and they affectionately called them, called it the Wild, Wild West because there were so many problems that they were having. The governor has decided he's going to look at the Cleveland Plan and try to institute those, those rules and regulations that Cleveland has put in place in the last few years for the entire state, just to alleviate the kinds of problems they've had with, with the charter schools and the flexibility they've had in the past.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Blake. Thank you, gentlemen. So I always have the distinct honor and privilege having my commissioners, fellow commissioners, go first with their questions, and I think it's probably the open secret that I do that purposely, rather than the chair taking his or her time upfront, because the questions are great and the constituencies represented by the commissioner are great as well, and they've covered a lot of ground. The other is, all three of you have been before the commission in other iterations, and certainly Mr. Leoni is a past member of this commission, so I feel as though I've read over materials from all three of you at minimum twice, perhaps more than that. So I'm just going to focus in on a couple of remarks and answers that you have given this evening, and I'm going to start with you, Mr. Appel. I would like you to, again, thinking about economy of words here, reconcile something you had in your application this time around related to priorities, the top priorities, you know, challenges facing the school system, and that's facility and resources, and that the board needs to provide the facilities and resources to teachers. I'm reading obviously verbatim from your application, to the teachers and administrators to perform at the highest level possible, and that sounds wonderful. What I'd like to understand, and how do you reconcile that with what you answered a few minutes ago with what I thought you, what I thought I heard, was your support for additional schools that are smaller so as to address smaller class sizes, which I think probably we can surmise have a, an accretive effect with teaching our children. So more schools, we have budget constraints, we have a capital backlog, and the boards yours to provide facilities and resources to teachers to perform at the highest level possible. How do you square all that in the present fiscal environment?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's not going to be easy. I think we need to continue to work with the county and the state to review the funding that's coming into the school system. And then we need to look at the resources that we have and see if they can't be better allocated. I mean, and just a real small example would be, you know, the start times, that discussion that's been going on in the buses, and whether or not we should spend some money on the scheduling software. There's probably room to save money on, on the school, on the buses. Then now whether you want to create later start times or possibly save some expenses on the buses is going to be a decision that's going to be, need to be made by the-
Well, you would stipulate, right, that saving costs on changing the bus times is probably not going to be enough money to build-
No, of course not, of course not.
-new schools, right? So what I'm trying to focus you on is squaring the budget environment with, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, your seeming support for the building of more schools so as to address smaller class sizes. So I appreciate your point about efficiencies in the bus schedule. Perhaps that'll help us with some morning congestion on some of our local roads, I jest. But how, how are you thinking about that? Because I am making an assumption, and perhaps I shouldn't, but I will for the sake of the Q and A here, that you've looked at the budgets for the school system over the prior years. A lot of what the school system spends their money on is transparent. So again, I'm going to come at you again on this with hopefully a little more detail in your answer about how you square all that. Where is the money going to come from to build these new schools notwithstanding the backlog of maintenance that we have?
So another, another proposal presented to the county council by the county executive was the 30-year bonds. And I did testify in front of the county council that I was in favor of that. I feel that the building of the schools and the facilities, using a 30-year bond, is fiscally responsible because those resources do have that type of lifespan. So that would certainly be one of the ways to expand the facilities with the given financial constraints.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leoni, I'm on a similar theme, but something that you had discussed in your application, but you've also discussed in some of your prior appearances before us. Dovetails maybe perhaps a little bit with Commissioner Blake on charter schools, but not, not exactly, and that is, you alluded to additional private investment into the school system, and I just wanted to get some clarity from you on what you meant by that.
Well, I think we've known for a long time that there are closed schools in Anarundel County that are, that are capped by the population that feeds into them. And to a certain extent, the more schools argument feeds on the fact that if private enterprise can build a school for us, and we can make that quantum leap of being able to afford to fill the school with teachers and administrators and books and materials and furniture, that that could be a workable model in an environment where a developer needs the, rather than wait the seven years for the moratorium to wear off and just do it to us anyway, being able to grab money in those kind of instances ahead of time and have them build our infrastructure certainly can make sense.
What about not tying it to development? Meaning there are schools in, in the system that are, in some cases antiquated, in other cases through the rolling capital budget of the school system are being replaced in the normal course of things. But divorce this for a moment from developers needing a certain capacity or there has to be a certain vacancy in a, in a, in a school, in a feeder system to build a school. Rather, private investment into rebuilding, refurbishing or rehabbing existing schools, so you're taking the same kids, the same personnel, you're getting a new school built, those same kids, same personnel are just going to go into the new school. So is that something that's in your, in your thought process about private investment or not?
I think it can be. I don't think there's a lot of incentive for private investment to do that at the moment. We would have to find ways to incentivize that, whether or not to make them the bondholders per se and give them a better investment cost in order to do business that way. But, you know, we have to be able to sell an endgame to it as well. Just, just because we're giving, you know, smaller class sizes in the end, you know, that should, cause and effect, make for better outcomes, but it's, it's not the only cog in the wheel. You know, that there's a, there's a significant investment in the infrastructure of how schools are run. So I think that does lend its fact, you know, it does lend a little bit to Commissioner Blake's questioning, is charter schools do have a role to play that way, that they can alleviate some overcrowding for us. They can, you know, take a building like MAF on Forest Drive and rehab that into a center that they could use for learning for grades K through eight and make a significant impact on our ability to afford other things.
Thank you. Mr. Webb, slightly different line of questioning, not on school construction and financing, you had addressed it in your application and certainly you're working on that in real time. I wanted to ask two specific questions related to something that you put in your application, but also has engendered some of the answers to some of the questions this evening. One, you alluded to in your application that there is a healthier atmosphere for sharing ideas and collaboration with the county executive and the county council. What did you mean by that?
What I meant by that, when I first came on, on to the school board, there was some friction between the county executive and the superintendent at that time. There was a lot of tit-for-tat going on even in the press between the county executive and the superintendent, and it didn't lead to anything positive. Since then, my fellow board members have suggested that we have collaborative meetings with county council, get to know each other. We've, we've, as I mentioned in my, in my remarks, we did the economic impact study and that presentation was designed particularly so that the county council could look at it from a cost-benefit standpoint, from a return on investment standpoint that had never been done before. I think it, it cleared the way for us, again, to go back to being more collaborative and sharing more ideas, that we, we have kept the doors open, we haven't been closed-minded at all with the current council or the current county executive.
Okay, thank you. And second, second question here, and again, it's not specifically directed to that relationship at the county council and county executive level, but program implementation and measurements of success. I, I've, from your application, some of your questions, and I've heard you at some board meetings, can't really have a true measure of success if you're not measuring something. But you've also alluded to the school system being committed over the long term. I think one of your phrases of art is staying the course. Is it your sense that the, the school system from the superintendent level are not staying the course on certain programs that have been implemented? And, or was, did you mean something else in that metric?
I meant, I meant something else in that metric, primarily that it's been my experience with the school system that they're relatively quick to adopt the latest and greatest idea that's come down the pike. Oftentimes, what I see is that that becomes traumatic for the teaching staff, the people in the trenches. When you make these quick adjustments, oftentimes there's, they're, they're not rolled out in a way that is conducive to teaching the children in the manner that the teachers have been taught to teach the children. So that's what I meant by that. We, we shouldn't be so quick to adopt everything that comes down the pike. Sometimes if it's not broke, you don't need to fix it. And if you do want to add something, what I've, what I've always advocated for is if we want to add something to the teacher's plate in particular, then what are we going to take off of the teacher's plate? Because currently their plate is full. So, you know, it's, it's up to staff to be cognizant of that, the central office to be cognizant of that, when they do want to bring in new, new things or new ways of doing things. We need to look at the programs and make sure that if they don't work, you know, we're getting rid of the programs that don't work, or if the programs are redundant, you know, we need to take that into consideration, but also take into the consideration the workload of the teachers when we're talking about programs.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all. That ends my round of questioning. We're done with our, at least, initial round. I had intended on having a second round, but if any commissioners at this point wanted to have a follow-up question individually, chair will entertain you being recognized to do that. If not, then I'd like to excuse the panel and say once again, thank you for your time this evening, your applications, certainly the dialogue we had this evening was very informative, and best of luck to all of you in the process. So at this point, that ends the official business of the commission. Again, we will be returning here to the board hearing room to hear from the District 31 candidates tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, similar format. So with that, without objection, we can stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.